Okay, good. All right, everyone, I am calling to order this Board of Education meeting. It is 6:02 PM on March 25th. We are in the Nashua North Boardroom. Ms. Lampier, can you do the roll call, please?
Sure. Ms. Bishop?
Here.
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Ms. Prin?
Here.
Ms. Daniels-Williams?
Here.
Here.
Mr. Claffey is not here.
He's not feeling well tonight.
Okay. Ms. Darling?
Here.
Ms. Gilio?
Here.
I'm here. And Ms. Raymond?
Here.
Okay. And then our student board members?
Here.
Here.
And tonight, we have Dr. Andre and Mr. Poska.
All right. After you do the prayer, Ms. Prin, can you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? You made eye contact with me first.
Okay. So Almighty God, we have the high honor and the serious duty of managing the educational institutions of our beloved city. In our common endeavors, may we find a spirit of unity and understanding which will enable us to face our multiple problems with an objective mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will be for the betterment and greater happiness of all of our fellow citizens. Amen.
Bless you. The states of America into the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice. Okay. Thank you for that. Before we head into this meeting tonight, I do just want to bring up a little bit of something that I've been noticing as a board, just a little bit of constructive feedback. I think that one of the great things about our board is that we get along, right? I think this is a great new thing for us. But I think with that comes a little bit of a lax in professionalism occasionally. So I am asking that we kind of go back to, I think we fall into first names a lot, so let's go back to last names. And also, I think Dr. Andre and his team work very hard on putting this together. So when we're in the meetings, I would like us to be present. I'm noticing a lot of people are typing, responding to emails, a lot of side chatter. And I think, in addition to us, I think it's leaking into our audience. I was noticing last week, we had a whole front row of people talking that I couldn't side-eye. So just trying to rein it back in. I hate having these kinds of conversations because I feel like the bad guy, but I think we need to remember that we're still in a professional meeting and that people are working hard to present us the information that we have, and we should give them the respect that they deserve. So with that, hopefully I never have to do something like that again, but I appreciate you all listening to me. And I am, we don't have any recognition or presentation tonight, so I am looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Ms. Raymond and Ms. Gilio, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay. Motion passes. This brings us right up to our first public comment question period. Oh, I didn't put the, did you put the? Raymond did. Thank you so much. Mr. Johnson, would you mind handing me the sign-up sheet?
I got used to doing it.
We got nothing.
For nothing? Okay. Wow. Okay. So this brings us right up to Dr. Andre. I'll give the floor over to you.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. First, I want to share some positive news around our Teacher Innovative Institute at the Smithsonian. Congratulations to Denise Rockohera, grade seven science teacher at Elm Street, for being accepted to the Teacher Innovator Institute at the Smithsonian National Air and Space Museum in Washington, DC. Denise is the first teacher from New Hampshire to be selected since the program began in 2017. Denise will be at the institute for two weeks this summer to explore how to make better connections between STEAM education, the study of science, technology, engineering, arts, and math, and authentic learning. Only thirty-two new teachers from across the country were selected this year to participate. Again, congratulations to Denise. I also want to inform the public on our budget process. We will start our budget hearings April 3rd, followed by the 10th and the 17th. This year, we will be presenting what we feel is a very tight budget. And in that presentation, unfortunately, we will be recommending some reductions in force. So this is going to be a tense time, a lot of anxiety. We never want to lose talented and dedicated educators. So I just want to thank them for their service because the next couple of weeks could be tense for many of our educators. I just want to give them a special appreciation for their service. Unfortunately, this has nothing to do with their performance, it's a tight budget. And hopefully, you know, the budget goes well, that we'll be able to recall many of those teachers back into the Nashville School District. On another note, while we're laying off some teachers, we're also hosting a job fair. We'll also be looking for new ELL teachers, as well as special education teachers. So tomorrow afternoon, here at Nashua North High School, the HR department is hosting a job fair. Again, we have openings in some areas, especially around ELL and special education, as well as a handful of other singleton, maybe a math teacher, one or two elementary teachers. Family consumer science will not be the fifty openings that we typically have. But we do encourage to get the word out so that we can start recruiting ELL teachers, special education teachers, and power educators. For a complete list of the openings, please log on to Nashua.edu and click on the employment link. Thank you.
Thank you. Board response to superintendent's comments. I'll start over here with Mr. Johnson.
No comment.
Thank you. Ms. Prin?
No comment.
Daniels-Williams?
No comment.
Darling?
No comment.
No comment.
Ms. Raymond?
Please have a comment. I'm just, I'm so excited to hear about Ms. Rockohera. She is just a rock star. And as you know, she also does all of the drama club stuff. And so she's just a treasure, and I'm so thrilled for her that she won this. The second question I had is about the shifting needs of the district for educators. And so it sounds like we have increased needs for special ed and English language learner teachers. Will, I guess my question is, do the teachers that are potentially getting the reduction in force notices, do any of those meet the criteria to shift over, or is it a separate area of interest? Like, how does that work?
So there is a pathway. So we're coaching some teachers that they might get a SOE to be an ELL teacher or a special educator. So we're hoping that, again, we'll retain as many teachers as possible. What may happen in the transfer process is that some teachers who are now regular ed teachers might end up as ELL teachers, which will create another opening, and then we can recall the teachers. We're hoping to really minimize the amount of teachers that we may lose from the districts. You know, we value all of them, and we're hoping to retain them.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Lampier?
Yeah. So my question is about substitute teachers. Now, I know we've had a lot of trouble finding substitute teachers, and our regular teachers have been filling in sometimes. And I'm wondering, with our workforce being even tighter with these reductions in force, how will that work? Do you have a plan, or is that something you want to address?
That'll come out during the budget process, but we're fully aware of how much we spend in substitute teachers, and we'll go through that.
Okay. Thank you. I also want to give a shout-out to Ms. Rockohera. She has been doing drama with my kids the entire time that they've been at Elm Street, and she's fantastic. And I know her passion lies with NASA, so she's really excited to do this, and I'm excited for her. Looking forward to the budget review. I know it's going to be tight, but I think you guys are putting together a quality presentation about it. My follow-up question is about the ELL and the special ed. Are we doing anything to diversify the pool of people to pull in here for the job fair, or are we just kind of sticking with local folks?
So we expanded a lot more online presence. And I know Mr. Ballas has been exploring different avenues to increase the pool.
Fantastic. Okay. Do you mind if I, it's not a board, it's not board response, but I did let Dr. Sarfati know that I would throw a shout-out to Ms. Archer for hosting the after-school, she and the Twenty-First Century are going to be hosting a solar eclipse kind of party activities and stuff at five of the high schools. The information is on the website, but I did say that I would mention it in here, so I see her up there, and I didn't want to forget it or wait till the end when everybody stops listening, so.
We have about 10,000 classes in the district.
Oh, fantastic.
Any students need them.
Yeah.
Wonder about, are there flyers going home to let parents know to the elementary school kids about the?
Yes, they are. We do have a certain number of spots, though, for those who are not participating in Twenty-First Century. There's only some, we only have so much capacity, so I just want to be transparent about that.
And if you're going to volunteer to help out, you do have to do the volunteer assurances before you get in there. We just want to make sure that whoever's with our kids is obviously safe. So, thank you for that. Sorry, I usurped your... Well, it's back to me now, I guess, anyway. So over here to the student board member comments. So Warren's making eye contact with me, so I'm guessing he's going first today. Excellent. Go ahead.
Good evening. I want to start off by reminding everyone that Nashua North's food pantry is always accepting donations. We recently have been seeing a lack of donations, and it's important that people understand that we have a lot of students who rely on that pantry. In the future, I hope to be able to work with different clubs to raise awareness for this, and even hold food drives or other events. I know other clubs and student initiatives, such as Meals Matter, are tackling very similar issues, so hopefully we can come up with some sort of united front and try and eradicate this issue. Also, North officially passed the dress code bill within the Student Senate and has officially sent it to South for their senate to review it and eventually vote on it. Once the two high schools agree on the exact wording, we can schedule a meeting with Ms. Raymond and Mr. Poska to further discuss this intricate problem. Lastly, SAT and PSAT testing are this week, Wednesday, the 27th, and I want to wish each Titan and Panther the best of luck on test day. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. As Mr. Farley previously stated just a few seconds ago, the new dress code was sent from the North Student Senate last week to the South Student Senate. However, last week's meeting was canceled, so hopefully it will be presented and voted on this week. Hope, please, so it can move forward, as Mr. Farley previously mentioned. This Wednesday, the 27th, will be the PSAT and SAT testing day, so make sure your school issued Chromebooks are charged, updated, and ready to go. I believe Mr. Richard sent out an email last week saying that the app had an update done to it, so please make sure you check your Chromebooks for any updates. Good luck, everyone. Due to the testing being on Wednesday, tomorrow, Tuesday, the 26th, will be the last day that the Math Honors Society will be providing eBloc tutoring. So if you need that, please make sure that you go tomorrow. The freshman sophomore dance has been rescheduled to April 12th. Tickets will be $10 in advance and $15 at the door. More details to come. Two days later, there will be an early release on April 17th. Please plan accordingly if you have clubs, sports, anything like that. On April 19th, any items in the lost and found at South that have not been claimed will be donated. So if you lost something at South in the last couple of weeks to months, that will be the last day that you'll be able to find it. And for any of those who do not know, today is Greek Independence Day. Today, in 1821, 203 years ago, a group of Greeks gathered at the Aeia Lavra monastery in Galavrida, Greece to declare independence against the rule of the oppressive Ottoman Empire, which had ruled Greece for almost 400 years. Nearly 10 years later, Greece was declared an independent country and remains to this day. So that is my comments for today. Thank you.
That's fantastic. Thank you for that little history that not all of us probably are aware of.
Of course.
Yes. And did you mention, make sure you charge your Chromebooks tonight, or Tuesday night?
Hopefully tonight, and double-check tomorrow because Blue Book, I believe the app is called, got an update. So make sure you update your Chromebook, so that will happen, so you don't have problems on Wednesday.
Excellent. Thank you. Big time for you guys. You'll be in our thoughts. All right. So this brings us up to Committee on Policy. I will hand the floor over to Ms. Raymond.
Thank you. I move that we approve policy JKAA restraint and seclusion. And I get a second, and I'll speak to it.
Second.
Thank you. So this policy, we've been working on, oh gosh, probably four and a half months now. The state passed a law last year, and the governor signed it in August, that essentially bans prone restraints, which we weren't really using anyways. But we took this as an opportunity to really take a look at our restraint and seclusion policy and update it so that what we are now asking for matches best practices. A lot of the stuff in the policy is stuff that we were already doing and already following, but wasn't included in our previous policy because we hadn't updated it in so long. So if everyone takes a look at it, our previous policy was two pages. The new policy is nine pages long. It is incredibly detailed. So there's a couple of notes on this policy. It increases the type of communication that we are expecting to go home to parents. And Ms. Lampier worked really hard on getting this language exactly the way she wanted it, along with Ms. Darling. And it also talks about what kind of next steps could happen after our restraint or seclusion. This policy should be in effect anytime there is any type of restraint and seclusion. And a lot of our conversation focused on children who have IEPs and 504s, but those aren't the only children who experience restraint and seclusion in school. Anytime there's a child who stopped in the hallway because of a disciplinary matter, that is a restraint and seclusion. So one of the things that the Policy Committee is asking as well, and I know that the motion isn't on our sheet tonight, but I'm going to say it anyways, I'm going to ask to amend my motion, is to make the policy active as of July 1st of this year, instead of making it active immediately upon our vote. And the reason is because I imagine that our staff needs some professional development, they need time to read and come to terms with the policy, but the expectation is that they're following it. Am I still right about that, Mr. Poska?
That's correct. I think, as you noted before, the amount of documentation is much more significant, and as the committee worked through, and really was a really productive conversation about the importance of the communication back to families about this, that's what came out of the policy. So much more detail than has been in the past. In addition, Ms. Raymond's going to talk about JKAA-R after this, which are the updated forms, and we're in a similar boat there. So we've just received those updated forms just a couple of weeks ago. We were in the process of uploading those forms into our student information system, much like many other districts, and it takes some time. It's not a process that happens overnight. So with this coming on board relatively late in the school year, the thought process was to give us some opportunity to work with our staff, to prepare them for it, and have it prepared for our summer school in honor of July 1.
So actually, let's write that down. So I would like to amend the motion to make it with an effective date of July 1st.
Second for that, right?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll second it.
Thank you. The other thing I wanted to say about it is that this policy will need to go into all of the handbooks as well, which is another reason why I would like to just, to delay the implementation of it. Having said that, it's my expectation, and I think it was the expectation of the Policy Committee, that the contents of the policy should be being followed already. So, any questions or comments? I know, Ms. Lampier, did you, I saw the red lines. I'm comfortable with that. Are you still comfortable with it?
Yes. Yes, I am. I just, one of the things that was really important to me was to make sure that parents were aware of what the school's final investigation shows happened, so that they have all the details of the restraint and seclusion. So, and we were able to do that together. It was really, it was really a great working environment with Ms. Darling and Ms. Raymond and I. We really worked hard on this, and Mr. Poska helped too, of course. So it was really a great experience altogether.
Yeah. I think, just to plug, and Mr. Johnson as well, I think that the Policy Committee really benefited from having a group of people on the committee who have experience with the IEP process, which is something that I don't have experience with. So being able to have people on the board who knew what they were talking about and had that, you know, lived experience was extremely helpful, I think, in crafting some of the language. So I really appreciated everyone's input.
Well, if Ms. Raymond wants to just amend her motion, and if Ms. Darling wants to continue seconding it, then you don't have to do an amendment on it.
Call it a friendly amendment?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Just one motion. Having said that, I would hope that this version goes online as soon as possible so that people have access to reading it and understanding what it says.
Yeah. And in the meantime, if you want to start practicing using it, get out the glitches now before it becomes...
Well, it's state law, so we got to be following it.
Well, doing the paperwork, which I know you're going to get to in the next one, just to figure out the new work process. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving policy JKAA as amended?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes.
Okay. All right. I move that we approve policy JKAA-R, which is the reporting form for restraint and seclusions.
Second.
And that also would start July 1st, right?
Yes. I'm sorry. Starting July 1st. Give us a chance. And the reason for that delay, again, is that this is, this form was created by the Department of Education. What they did is they had all of the districts in the state send in their reporting forms. They reviewed them, and then they kind of squished them all together, and then updated them to comply with the new requirements under the law as well. And so the Department of Education wants every single district to use this form, which is great, but it's not integrated in X2 the way that our previous form was, which means that we can't do any data searching, which is unhelpful for us as we learn and try and figure out what PD we need and other things. So hopefully IT can fix that. In the meantime, Mr. Poska, how are our staff going to access the form? Because this is something that any staff member could potentially have to fill out, right?
Yep. In preparation for this, we've sent something out to the principals across all grade levels, letting them know that this was forthcoming, including the updated forms, so they have access to those forms as well. To your point, it is not updated in X2 yet, but the schools do have the hard copies with them, so they will be expected to fill out those hard copies at this time, as well as follow the notification process as well.
Is there any, like, Google Doc or anything, or is it all going to be handwritten until we get the X2 updated?
Handwritten until we get it updated in X2.
Oh, pressure on that. I have the worst handwriting. That would just, I'd be so nervous, especially since this is going to go to parents, correct?
Yes. This form must be shared with parents.
All right. And just to let everyone know, our previous form, when you printed it out, was like a couple pages long, three pages. This one is 13 pages long. So that does include some blank spaces where narratives can go in, but it is extensive, and it is being required by the state, so we have to do it.
You made that motion. Who seconded it?
Oh, Ms. Darling, but she stepped out. Was it Ms. Darling who seconded it? Yeah.
Any other comments or questions in regards to the paperwork portion of JKAA? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. Please note that Ms. Darling was stepped out of the room.
Okay. And so also on our agenda is JFABD, which is Education of Homeless Children and Unaccompanied Youth. This is the first reading, so we have it on here in case people had questions or comments. We'll vote on it next time. And I just want to bring the board's attention to the fact that policy started our discussion of BEDG, which is meeting minutes, at our last Policy Committee meeting. There is a legal update on non-public meetings that we need to incorporate, and I would just ask that the whole board kind of read that, because the new policy is extremely different than our previous policy. And so I think we need to have some robust discussion about it before we bring it to the full board. So, everyone's invited to policy meeting, or to send me their thoughts via email, and I will read them aloud in policy meeting.
Yes. Ms. Raymond, I had a follow-up question for you in regards to policy. If we're going through and reviewing the older ones, obviously we have to review all of these every four years, but it was, I chatted a little bit with NHSBA about the first reading and second reading. There are times that if we decide as a board that we don't need to do a first and second, I'm wondering if some of the older policies that just need to be rescinded or, like, different bulletproofed. I know that's the most boring part of policy, but it is still, still needs to get done. But we don't necessarily need to do the first and second. But if you wanted to tackle some of those and then just give them to us to approve in a meeting, we don't have to do all of the different readings on them.
Yeah. If there's no changes, that makes sense to me. I know our last, well, maybe it wasn't the last one, maybe it was the one before it, but recently we had a policy that was time limited, and so the board weaved one of the readings, and I think that's fine.
Yeah.
But I think right now, in our policy queue, are a lot of legal updates, and so those have to take priority so that we're up to date with the state laws. And so those are pretty significant changes. And we're trying to limit it to four or five policies a month, instead of our previous year 10.
Right? Well, I wonder if it's just, if it's just format stuff, and there's not actually any, like, content changes. I don't know. Maybe we can have like a sub, like a boring policy meeting.
I mean, like this particular one, there's a number of legal updates on it, but the effect of all the legal updates was one sentence change.
Sounds about right. Okay. Well, thank you for that. Committee on Curriculum Evaluation, I don't have any bullet points. You guys didn't, you guys didn't meet, right? It was just a presentation?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah. Mr. Claffey isn't here. Do you want to speak a little bit to what it was?
Sure. And I noticed that the materials weren't in the package, so...
Did you get, you guys didn't vote on anything, right?
We didn't.
No. So it would just be in the curriculum?
Okay.
Committee meeting minutes for us all to have reviewed timely in the past.
Got it. Okay. I just wanted to see if I can really quickly speak, because our teachers were here, and I want to make sure that I highlight the great work that they're doing. So the first item, we had a presentation from Maureen Pat, and she talked about using the writing revolution, which is really just getting down to writing at the sentence level across the disciplines. And she showed us examples of great student work that she is seeing in her third-grade classroom. We also heard from a number of teachers regarding Lexia Core 5, and we were able to look at the data that has been extracted from those schools, and we were able to look at the tremendous growth that students are making. Additionally, we heard from the middle school about the collaboration between the middle school ELA teachers and the Teaching and Learning Alliance. And then finally, we heard, well, we didn't hear, we just saw some examples of two great things that are happening in science classrooms at Bicentennial and also at Penachalk, where experts were invited into the classroom virtually, one from NASA and one who was a food chemist. And that's everything.
Thank you very much for that update. You guys always have such interesting meetings, and they're so full of information. So thank you for recapping that. I will now give the floor over to Ms. Gilio for Committee on Human Resources.
Okay. I'm looking for a motion to suspend the rules to consider items from the HR meeting held earlier this evening.
I move.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Raymond. Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Hey. We have a rec-
Hold, we have to vote. All those, and I did pause, like, I was done. So all those in favor of suspending the rules, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes.
Okay. I'd like a motion to approve the personnel recommendations dated March 25th that were presented by the administration, which we approved as a committee tonight.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Raymond. Thank you, Ms. Raymond, thank you, Mr. Johnson. Any questions about the personnel recommendations presented tonight? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Passes. Okay.
Further, I would like a motion to honor the recommendation to elect Helene Talbot as the Director of Career and Technical Education effective July 1st, 2024, at an annual salary of $118,902, which passed our committee earlier this evening.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Ms. Raymond.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Comments or questions? I think the only comments we all have are, we are extremely excited about this, and I think you guys spoke a lot in HR about your historical time within the district and your future planning and just how overly qualified you are for this position, so we are all extremely proud to say, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Welcome to the team.
I just want to echo Ms. Bishop's comments. We're extremely pleased to keep Helene in the district, just moving a different seat. Her leadership, both as a classroom teacher, as an elementary high school assistant principal, headmaster, and then as an elementary principal over the last few years, has just been outstanding. So we are thrilled that she'll bring her educational vision, her educational leadership, and her instructional vision to, back to the CTE, where she knows she'll be supporting those CTE teachers and building new relationships with our community partners. So we're really excited to have Helene serving as a Director of CTE. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Okay. No unfinished business, so this brings us up to our new business. So Dr. Andre, I'll hand the floor back over to you.
So the first item is, we're looking for an approval to, approval for the 21st Century Grade 3 through 5 youth survey, and Ms. Archer is here to answer any of your questions, if you have any.
We'll wait for her to get down here, start screaming at her from the audience.
Do you want to just give a quick little background before they vote on it?
I got it right here. Thank you, everyone, for allowing me to present to you tonight and just ask you a quick question. For our 21st Century program, it's in our after-school program that operates out of our five Title I elementary schools, as well as Sunset Heights and Birch Hill Elementary Schools. Every year, we go through a number of different evaluations, and one of the most important is asking the students directly their view on 21st Century and the impact that we have. And we just offer a very, very simplified survey that asks questions like, do you feel like you belong in the program? Do the teachers and the staff communicate the purpose of the activities that we do? Do you feel like everyone is kind? So just annually, I'll need to receive permission for us to have this survey be administered to the students. This year, it's gonna be administered from April 1st until June 14th, so it gives us plenty of time, but I want to make sure that we take the necessary steps to obtain permission from the board, but then also communicate to the parents what our intentions are, share an example of the survey with them, if we need to have it translated for any of our students who need it, and just make sure that we have it just announced in appropriate places, like our 21st Century webpage, our social medias, sharing it through flyers and newsletters with our families, and then also just, again, making sure that it's translated if it's, if there's a need for that. Then we also want to make sure that parents are aware of the fact that they do have the option to opt out of the survey, but we will encourage their participation, because feedback from families, feedback from our students is gonna help us to continuously improve our program.
Comments or questions, Ms. Raymond?
So my question is about the parental engagement part of the survey. So typically, we send a, like a, for in-school surveys, we would send a permission slip or a notice home, I think it's two weeks before the survey, and then parents like have to sign a form if they don't want their kid to take a survey. For some of them, and some of them, they have to sign a form if they do want the kid. So what is the parental permission part of this survey?
Part of our registration form actually asks at the beginning of the school year, or whenever they're signing their child up for 21st Century, if they give permission for us to implement surveys, but I just want to make sure that's not just like a blanket announcement. I want to make sure that they know when we're coming in and when we're asking questions. I also forgot to say that this survey is coming from the Department of Education from New Hampshire, so they implement it, but we make sure that we're communicating so parents are aware that we are doing it. But all of the families who are in our program, they have the option at the beginning of registration to say yes or no.
Okay, follow-up? How is the survey gonna be administered? Is it a piece-of-paper survey, or is it a computer survey?
It's a piece-of-paper survey. So in previous years, we've had a piece of paper for the students. They provide their, their feedback or their answers for it. Then our administrative assistant does communicate those answers to the Department of Education, and then we provide them those copies so that they have the actual surveys, and they know that we're not manipulating the answers.
Okay, and last question, is the survey anonymous?
Yes, it can be, yes.
Great. And you said already, you have staff to translate it into the appropriate languages. Great, thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Ms. Prin?
I hope this is not an obvious question, but do they actually take the survey while they're there? It's not something they do at home?
No, they would take it in the program. Yep. So if it's specifically for students, third grade to fifth grade, majority of them can complete it independently. The survey is very simplified, but if there are students who will need assistance, we have staff who can provide them the unbiased support.
One more. Do you know when the Department of Ed will get the results to you and then to the district so we get an idea? Like I saw the sample survey and the thing, and some of them, some of the questions are really interesting, and I, I think that it would be helpful for us to know how our kids feel.
I don't have specific dates, but I can get that to you.
Just curious, if it's like six months later?
Yeah, I'd be curious, and maybe I missed it or overlooked it, but the outcome of the surveys, what do they help guide your practice with?
For example, there's one question that says, do the staff communicate the purpose of the activities that we do? I don't want our staff to just be thrown here, you know, do this activity or complete this. I want the students to know the purpose of it and how it connects to their school day learning and their sense of belonging to the school community. So receiving the feedback is gonna help me to instruct my staff or for my staff to instruct their part-time staff, so that every student is walking away with a wealth of knowledge and a positive impact from the work that we're doing.
Yeah. My, my youngest son did 21st Century at Sunset Heights when it first came out, and he loved the improv portion of it, but that's also when he kind of learned to talk back a little, so thank you. But I absolutely loved your program. I thought it was fantastic, and what you guys do within the schools is just really innovative, and I love that it's research-based and you guys are able to get all that information and influence, influence future initiatives, so.
Yep, a lot of collaboration from the school day, school day teachers and educators and staff, and collaboration amongst the different departments. It's great.
Yep, fantastic. Any other comments or questions? I have to get back to the agenda. Okay, so all those in favor of approving the 21st Century Grade 3 to 5 youth survey, say aye.
Aye.
But you made the motion, didn't you? Okay, I'll make the motion, so I move to approve. Sorry about that, guys. I approve, I move to approve the 21st Century Grade 3 to 5 youth survey.
Second.
Gilio?
No.
I'll vote for it. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the 21st Century youth survey, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, I will hand the floor back over to Dr. Andre.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Archer.
Thank you. This next item is a request from the Board of Aldermen related to Resolution R24032, supporting the issuance of our request for proposals relative to the sale of the Elm Street Middle School property. What the Board of Aldermen is requesting tonight is just confirmation of the Board of Education that it's our intention that Elm Street Middle School is no longer needed for public school purposes after the end of the current school year, and will transfer the care and custody of the property to the city pursuant to New Hampshire RSA 19942. So we're just looking for a motion regarding the confirmation that's our intent of Elm Street to turn it back over.
Don't want to make this motion, somebody else can.
So is the motion to concur with Nashville Resolution R2432?
Correct.
Okay. I make the motion to concur with the City of Nashville Resolution R24032 in regards to Elm Street Middle School.
Second. Daniels Williams is seconded. Comments or questions?
No, do we know when they're? I know they just had a meeting about Elm Street, and I have thoughts on that meeting. Do they have a schedule for when, like, community feedback will be taken about what to do about the building?
We'll be the last to know.
That's my knowledge.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Is there gonna be a day where I can go back and say goodbye to Elm Street?
Oh, good question.
So...
Yeah, so we're working on those schedules. We were just in touch with the construction supervisor at McCarthy Middle School, just of when tours can start happening for staff and students, and then Ms. Hines and the Elm Street Administration are looking at dates in June where the public can come back. So we're waiting a little closer to the end of the year.
All righty.
That was also my middle school, well, my junior high back in the day, but I know I've been obnoxious about this and maybe auctioning off things within the building that aren't needed. I thought it'd be a great fundraiser. Somebody else had written in and mentioned maybe not just doing tours, but people could donate $2 and it could go to the new PTO fundraiser, I don't know. But there are lots of things that I would like to do to commemorate, and I think we're gonna pick some artifacts to go over to the Historical Society to live there for a little bit. But yeah, this, this is a big goodbye for a lot of us.
So those dates are forthcoming.
Yeah, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Maris. I would love to see a grand closing and then maybe a grand opening of, not just McCarthy, but the other two middle schools too, because a lot of our families are shifting where their kids have traditionally gone to school, so this will be new buildings for them, and it would be nice to have not just the push-up day for the kids, but the families as well.
McCarthy's still a hot-hat area right now, so we can't have too many visitors.
No, I'm thinking over the summer for August.
September, yep.
Okay, well, Mr. Johnson?
Just being new to the board and everything, McCarthy is on schedule, right, too?
Yes.
Yep. Before we vote, too.
Barring any natural disaster, like all these weird sinkholes, but. Okay, was that it? Any other comments or questions? Okay, so all of those in favor of approval, approving the resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
I feel ya. All right.
And the last item, I'm gonna invite Mr. Bear up, is the approval of the alternate program at McCarthy Middle School. Again, this is a program that will serve our special education students, and Mr. Bear has been working very closely with the Department of Education on the approval process and the documentation, so Mr. Bear is here just to give a quick summary of what we're looking at in McCarthy relative to the alternative program and answer any of your questions.
Make sure your mic is on. Thank you.
Can everyone hear me?
Maybe get a little closer to it.
Okay, thanks. So I'll keep it very short, and then if people have questions. So in your board backup, there's, there are three items in there, pages, I think, 41 to 44. First, you have a memo to the board sort of explaining four reasons why to vote and approve this. There's a fifth reason, which I would add, which is continuity, and so as I'm new to this district, and I know we have new board members, I would just highlight the fact that in the longer-term vision, the planning of McCarthy, it has been the hope that McCarthy would house some of our specialized programming. And so this, this really stands as a governance piece based on guidance from the Department of Education on kind of how to get started establishing those programs for the school. So in the memo, it outlines for sort of other basic reasons why to think, why to approve or vote in favor of this. Then we have a structure of the plan itself on pages 42 and 43. It's very short, it simply follows the state's regulations for what, what has to be in a plan for an alternative program. And then you'll see a mock-up of the actual application to the Department of Ed on page 44 there. Helpful if I brief on the reasons in the memo? Okay, I'll do that very quickly for the, for the audience. So in addition to the fact, this is sort of a piece of a larger plan to establish specialized programming in McCarthy, the department has advised us to start first by launching this as an alternative program under the state's regulations there. That really is item number three on the memo, so it really allows a certain degree of autonomy when you build the, the structure of a program to do it this way first, to start it as an alternative program under the state's regulations. And then three reasons, which are really student and community focused, that I would draw your attention to, the first being, this is really gonna increase the district's ability to educate students in districts, so students with significant behavioral or emotional needs, where in some cases, we may need out-of-district placements. Our hope is really to build that capacity in district. Related to that, item number two, is that when students have the opportunity to be educated in their hometown as opposed to a different location, they really get much more authentic experience, they're around their same-age peers, and when they're working towards job and community skills, they're doing it in their own community as opposed to student experience. And then item four on here is really sort of a long-term vision that also, once a special education program is established under a different process, the, what we call the special ed program approval process, at that point, when a, when a program is approved by the state, that also allows for other districts to tuition students in. And so in terms of long-term capacity and getting, building that capacity for our district, that's another feature, too, is that it may eventually also allow for, for students to be tuitioned in.
Comments or questions? I'll do Ms. Daniels Williams and then Ms. Raymond.
I'm just understanding, this is gonna be, these are the blueprints for a school within a school, so that's what's separating it, you know, number three, separating it from the McCarthy Middle School. So is it, is it gonna be like Franklin Street, where is a charter-type mandate separating from the district?
That's actually a very good connection, so we, because I'm new to the district as well, I've been doing this and working with Dr. Andre and our, our leadership team and Mr. Alexander, we, we looked at the, at the past history of the Brentwood application and how that had played into the Franklin Street school. So I think there, I think there's a parallel there. I don't know if I answered your question, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that was the answer to the question, but I was just making sure that that's, I'm seeing it correctly, I'm understanding it correctly.
Yeah, so that was the guidance from the, the State Department of Education, was that establishing it as an autonomous program for exactly the purposes that you mentioned, autonomous scheduling, autonomous grading, really allows, just as you put it, a school within a school.
But separating it from the district, the McCarthy alternative?
Oh, it's, it wouldn't be separate from the district.
Okay. Okay. That's what, that was my question, I wanted to make sure I was understanding everything.
Yeah, so, and so we looked, and so again, as a, this being my first year, we looked historically at how the Brentwood Academy program had been launched first under, I think, SALT originally, and then as an independent, but still all within the district's oversight.
Raymond?
Thank you. So I have obviously a bunch of questions. So when I, when I saw this on the agenda, my first thought was that this was gonna be like our project achievement at the elementary schools, only at a middle school level, but having read the proposal, now I'm seeing it something different. So is this to, back up, so originally, we had talked about bringing middle school students who we are currently serving out of district because of their needs back into the district, and McCarthy has special facilities for, you know, providing, I mean, there's like changing tables, and there's a PT room, and there's all sorts of other things that we don't currently have. But your application says K through 12, so I guess my question is, is the application wider in scope than the additional thing to allow for growth, or is the intention to move our current programming into there? Or is the intention to move our current programming into there? Or like, yeah, I need more, I need more details.
You just hit it on the head. So originally, it was always on a middle school program, but this application allows for growth. So if we have students at the elementary level who we need to kind of come back, if we have space there, we can open up additional classrooms. So we are looking at those transitional students who, who might be going out of district, coming back from, from out of district. But we have additional space at McCarthy. So if we can open up another classroom, this application gives us that flexibility to service more students and build that community of learners. So again, we've been working really close with the Department of Education and they guided us to this is the best route to give us the most flexibility, especially at the beginning.
So follow up to that. Are we, are we, are you looking at bringing students back for this September? Or is this the first step in a multi-year process?
It's a multi-year pro, I mean, there's a lot going on.
Right.
You know, so we're starting really small. So really, just next year at McCarthy, it'll be really geared towards middle school students. We're looking at the numbers and then growing from there. So again, middle school focused for next year.
So as we're talking about staffing needs and the additional needs for special education teachers, for example, that is to me our current programmatic needs, not to expand for this program?
Not yet.
Okay. Sorry, I just was following up on our conversation from HR. Okay.
Ms. Lanfer?
I'm really uncomfortable with this. You know, the purpose of IEPs under federal mandate is to give children the least restrictive environment. And when I first came on the board, the McCarthy Middle School was already underway and there was already a plan to put our kids with more serious disabilities there. And, you know, I understand that that is, it's not an ideal plan. But I never thought there was gonna be a school within a school. I thought there was gonna be opportunities down the road for the kids that have more intensive needs to interact with the kids who, who don't have special needs. You know, my son was eight when he died and I already felt the world like globally in on us because people are not around children with disabilities. They're certainly not around adults with disabilities. So by having the children interact with each other, it's better for the children with disabilities. It's also better for the children without disabilities. And I know you guys know this. And I feel like this alternate program will set up another barrier to them interacting. And also the idea of having kindergarten through 12th grade together, it just doesn't, it, it's not, it's not good programming. There's no circumstance under which that would be appropriate. It's a middle school, it should be for middle school kids. And I understand that it would cost this, you know, it would enable the, the school to bring more kids back into the district. But, you know, kindergartners and middle schoolers, kindergartners and high school kids, it's, I, I will definitely not approve this. And I, I hope that, I hope that I'm not alone. Thank you.
Mr. Bear, do you, just wanna talk about the opportunities, because it's not supposed to seclude students. So it's really to create, create more opportunities within the school setting. So, Mr. Bear, can, it's not...
I understand that might not be the intention. I underst, I have faith in you guys, I know that you're doing the best you can and you're doing what you think is best for the kids. But you have a separate grading system, you can have a separate schedule. How are they gonna interact? When are they gonna interact? And also, also what would be, if we don't set up this alternate program tonight, what would, what would, what would, how would that look?
I'll, I'll give a couple of thoughts and then there may be others who wanna speak to us. First of all, Ms. Lanfer, I just wanna honor what you shared with us and, and also where you're coming from about least restrictive environment. I think that's something that we, as a district, we're very proud of. Glad that you are raising this. I think, so not to gloss over what we're doing here, but I would put this, the conversation tonight is, for my view, really just about establishing a governance foundation to establish programming. So this doesn't, to Dr. Andre's point, this doesn't have a staffed program in schools next year. This is establishing a governance structure within our district. So all of the specific questions that get into that, I feel like are, are need to be addressed and would be addressed in the... Then to your piece about, obviously, we need to follow any other regulations about things like grade span, age span, so forth. And so I, it is also shocking to see a K to 12 in mind, kindergartners and 18-year-olds, and that's not the intent. Advice from the department was to establish it, establishing the governance structure. To the point about also at least restrictive environment. So I think that was part of why we wanted to highlight that this has a great capacity to bring students, have programming for them in district, currently be served in and out of district. Given that on the...
Your microphone just...
Oh, I'm sorry. Given that on this, on the continuum of, of settings for students with disabilities, this would actually move, ideally would move students from out of district, which is more restrictive, something where they have more opportunity to spend time and have interactions with same-age peers from their neighborhood or from their...
I'm sorry, can you speak more on that point? So is this program for kids that are currently in Nashua schools to then move to McCarthy potentially? Or is this student, is this program for students who are not being served in schools now because we don't have the capacity to do it and we're bringing them back to our community? Because I think this is a, a point of confusion that I'm having.
It depends on the student's IEP. I, I mean, it's not a, it may be students that we were referring to out of district that we're gonna hold on to and it might be students who are ready to transition back to Nashua. That would be, again, a, a transition. So I don't think it's all, it depends on the students' needs and, and services that we could provide.
Thank you.
I have a question. So one of the things that we talk about a lot in regards to staffing is the challenges that we have in staffing the special education classrooms. And not only are we talking about kind of your, your normal already in the mainstream classroom special ed students, but now we're adding additional layers of need, which I'm assuming means additional layers of support from teachers and finding teachers who are trained to, to work with students who have higher levels of need. How are we gonna do that when we can't even staff our regular special ed classes?
So we're hoping there's a little more economies of scale that we could be working on with the professional development needs. Are there also other partners that can help us build the capacity in with that staffing? So again, it's, I, I believe with the, the economy of scale that we actually can staff it differently. You know, we look at our elementary right now and we're scattered sometimes that we can't provide enough staffing. We have different issues at the high schools because it's just more concentrated in our staffing. So same thing at the middle school, based on the students' needs, that we can recruit a little differently and provide very specific professional development to give those supports. And there might be, you know, community partners that can help us with this.
Would this make it easier for students who need things like OTPT speech, where we have people traveling school to school, to be more accessible to the students and meet their IEP needs better because of the locale?
I would, I would, on the economy of scale question, I think that, that's certainly a hope.
Sometimes I like to ask stupid questions just to make sure that it's, it's said very loudly. Ms. Lanfer?
So I'm hearing all the positives that could be done without setting up an alternate program. And I'd also like to point out that I, for one, do not have much faith in the current New Hampshire Department of Education under Frank Ettleblut. And I don't know if anyone else on the board feels the same way. So I would be reluctant to set this up under him and follow his advice when he has no experience as a teacher or in a school district. And I would prefer to wait down the road, see how the program looks set up within the McCarthy Middle School, and then maybe discuss setting up an alternate program maybe in a few years.
Ms. Daniels, Williams?
I like that idea. I would like to not vote on it now and wait, because that was my question. Because if we're going to set it up like Franklin, we see how everything is all separated and that they can't interact because of dangerous things and, you know, just everything. I want, I want to make sure that we have more information, that we're seeking the right guidance. So that's...
I hear, I hear Dr. Andre over here, so you go first and then Ms. Prin and then Ms. Jilio.
I can wait for their comments and chime in, they might be similar.
Okay. Ms. Prin, then Ms. Jilio.
Well, mine more is asking for clarification, because I'm, I'm a little familiar with alternate programs. Would there be flexibility within that program? Say, for example, if a child who maybe has severe behavioral issues in the regular education classroom on their IEP attends this program, would there be flexibility for them to be able to go back to the regular education classroom and not just be put in this program forever and ever?
That, that's correct. We're not looking at like there's a wall at McCarthy, like where they can't cross the line. We're still looking at, it's a school within a school where students will still have access to regular education opportunities, still being integrated into the classroom. This is really more about the, the governance and giving us flexibility down the line. Should we, I say should we, when we are successful in, in our programming, that we may be able to tuition other students in from other districts and kind of grow the program? This is really, again, about governance. The one comment I would say is that we are working with the Department of Education and really reviewing like RSAs. It's not like a, a philosophy thing, but what are we permitted to do under federal and state law? So that's where it's really coming from, as opposed to a political or any kind of leadership aspect of it. The RSAs and federal law are gonna remain the same under, you know, current or new leadership. So that's really not gonna change too much. We're really going through what are the laws, what are the protocols, and what do we have to put in place to give us flexibility? So that's the only caution that I would say if we're delaying it, it's, it's not gonna allow us to actually start building a program and, and building that out. I don't foresee the, the laws changing in, in, under that regard. So I would just caution us, delaying it based on who the commissioner is, is not gonna change the laws and the, and the steps we're gonna have to do in the future.
Ms. Jilio?
So I've been on the JS SBC since I joined the board, so this is like my fifth year doing that. Because my 19 years as a school librarian, my experience was all in middle school. And one of the things that, that I've seen through my previous district and, and here is how much we do spend and how isolated some of our children are when they have to be sent to, to programs that are outside of our, of our community. However, it would be, I've listened to what everyone has said tonight and I appreciate their comments and I appreciate all the hard work on this. I would be better able to vote in favor of this if we were gonna start out by dealing just with middle school students and then seeing how that works out before we go from K to 12 with the program. And, and I, and that's not how this looks. I mean, so right now, the way I'm looking at the application process, I don't think I could be in favor of it. I think that, that we, all along when we were talking about building this new school, one of the, one of the, the things that we were proud of was that we were gonna include a way to service the students who have needs that we're not servicing now and to start there at that middle school. And I, I feel pretty strongly that that's the population we should be starting with to bring back and then maybe go from there later, so just how I feel about it.
Again, I think all along, it's our intent to talk at the middle school, so I don't want to like mislead the board saying that we changed directions. We're still looking at middle school students. But again, as Mr. Bear said, based on the advice from the state, really K-12, if we're looking to expand down the line, but we would still be focused on middle school students. Again, there's a lot going on next year at the middle school level. We wanna keep it as simple as possible and as complex as the transition's gonna be.
Raymond, then I have a question.
So if the, if the application, instead of circling all K through 12, if the application was only for six, seven, eight, or even five to nine, so that it is still in that kind of cohort of developmental stages, what would happen then if in, say, five years? Because I don't see this program expanding much more rapidly than that. But so what would happen in five years if we have developed a successful program where we have middle schoolers coming back, but now it's time for them to go to high school and they have to go out of district? Like, how long is the application process to expand the process, the, the program? Like, what's the lead time for having to go through, to, to get approval from the state to expand it?
If we see that data coming, it's, it's been taking us six months already, so we're not done yet. So we would just have to forecast at least one school year ahead to make it happen.
Are we able to bring back any high schoolers who are out of district into the high schools now and meet their needs? Or would these high schoolers be in this middle school environment?
Mr. Bear? I was gonna say, Mr. Alexander can talk about the amount of students that we currently take back.
Okay.
Sure, thanks for having me come down. So as Dr. Andre just said, we've been working on this for six months. So this actually dates back five years. So this part of McCarthy was actually designed by Marcia Bagley, the, the previous special ed director, with this intent in mind. And it took me most of last year with Mr. Poska, looking at the plans, walking through and talking with her about what the intent was for this section of McCarthy. And I think we would be way behind scheduling if we waited. I think five years is a long time. We have a lot of students who need support outside of our district right now. We've had a lot of students who've needed that this year. So I don't wanna say urgency, because we are gonna take our time and we're gonna be diligent about doing this and doing it correctly. So we are providing the best for our students. But I think someone talked about it, Ms. Jilio talked about, you know, the out-of-district kids being isolated. This gives our kids this opportunity back in our community, as we said. So that's why we wanted to do the application kind of as the K through 12 and then work to build those programs from our middle school, our high schools outward, and then look at what we have at the elementary level. Are there students that we can start bringing back, keeping within our community? We also see it as a very short term, so that there is a student who needs that support. I think, sorry, Ms. Prin said it, that yes, that is another thing that we want, based on that economy of scale. So we have experts that are supporting over in this program that, over time, can support those kids, go back to the school with the child, help some training within that environment, so that kid is then stable back in that school as well and get that support. Currently, we struggle to get kids back in district. I, I don't wanna say there's ulterior motives by other, other out-of-district placements, but Lighthouse is building another campus. So they are, you know, bringing in students, they're accepting students, tuition rates are going up for out-of-district students, and they're expanding. So they're not the first ones at the table saying Johnny's ready to go back to your school district. He's doing a great job. It becomes a lot of us really talking about and looking at and trying to get the data that Johnny is ready to come back to our schools and support. So we wanna head that off before the student gets there, so that we can support them here in our district. I think we do a really good job at it now. I think we can continue to do a better job at it.
Raymond?
So I, I'm struggling with this one. I look at, I, I forget which school district it is, but someone was in the news just this weekend because they are $800,000 in the hole because of unexpected special education costs, because they had, I don't know, like one or two students that had extremely high needs that they weren't expecting. And so the whole idea of building that extra floor in McCarthy was to bring kids back and service them here at home. I, I just am really concerned about the idea of having a destination school for our students with, with special needs instead of integrating them. At a, at a hearing at the State House a couple of weeks ago, we were talking about some more restrictions on restraints. And there's a, there was a, a state representative who wants everyone to wear body cams all the time. This is his solution. to wear body cams all the time. This is his solution. But his other solution was that he said, we need to bring segregation back for our special education population. And I almost fell out of my chair with horror because I want to make sure that we don't ever move in that direction because diversity and integration is the way that we need to go. So, you know, in order to support this, it would be with the idea of increasing our, you know, diversity and integration of our students, not separating them out.
Absolutely. And that, that is the goal because these students, many of them are already separated because they're at a school that does not allow them to act, interact with non-disabled peers ever. And many of those students stay in that environment for six, eight, 10 years, graduate from there, and they never come back to us. So our ultimate goal is always, is going to be there. Many of you attend the Brentwood graduation every year. It's probably one of the most powerful things we have in our district as far as I'm concerned. Others might disagree. And there's only four kids, but those kids would not have that opportunity to go back to North and South and have the opportunities there had we, had we not have Brentwood Academy. And currently Brentwood is slated to start the year with 30 students, nine of which are from other districts. So it's a very known entity and the job that they do. I have had six to seven districts call me this year trying to place students in our intensive needs or our project achievement programs because we do a good job at our programs. I think it'll be part of the budget presentation coming up next week. But, you know, we have over 10 districts. I think we're going to be at 12 by the end of next week that want to send kids to our signs of learning program. So one of the things we do great in Nashua is our programming, and that's why we want to continue to expand it and make it better for all of our kids so that they have the opportunity to stay in Nashua. And that every time a bus crosses the border out of Nashua City or over state line to go to an out of district, how can we do it better? That, that's what we need to look at. And this is our first step is getting this approval for the Yelp program from you guys so that we can then go back to the Department of Ed and start the program approval process for special education. And that is extremely difficult and time consuming. So.
So what is the benefit of making this a school within a school and not just a Nashua school project?
I don't understand the second part of the question.
So why do we need to have it be a separate entity and have it have teased out grades and have teased out regulations? Why can't it just be part of our district and people pay tuition if we get to that point to come into our district? Because I, I, I'm concerned when we start doing these schools within a school is that we may run into, and I think some people would look at it as an opportunity, I do not, going into private staffing agencies. I just, I, I think our regulations for teachers are, are much higher. So I'm worried that if we go into this kind of differentiation within the school, that we open up opportunities to be more, I mean, I just don't, I don't like that. But just tell me, what are the benefits of being a school within a school?
So my understanding, if I, if I understand the question, and this is what Dr. Green explained up to us from the Department of Ed, is that McCarthy, the school itself would have to be K through 12, not just the lower level that was designed for this program.
That's if we want to invite non-middle schoolers into the program.
Correct. Yep. So when you look at Franklin Street, Franklin Street is, I think it's pre-K through K and then nine through 12 is their building approval. And then Brentwood has its own and then preschool has its own. So we would have to change the entire approval that Dr. Andre would be asking for from the state for that to have students outside of the middle school realm. This keeps that from happening and it puts it into that one environment and keeps it within that one school, keeps us, as we talked about, different standards because we're talking about a different population of students that we are going to be working on and they're going to have some significant challenges that we want to focus on specifically for them to work versus they may be working a, a parallel type to the curriculum that we may have.
And what are the benchmarks for success for when you guys know that we can start looking out of district for more middle schoolers or expanding into different grades? When, when will the board know that it's time to make that shift? And how are you going to present it to us in a way that we can say, I don't think we're ready yet?
Great question. I don't think I was prepared for that one tonight, but I'll do my best. And Dr. Andre certainly jump in anytime with that one. But I, I think that it will, you know, certainly be is that are these students being successful? Are we integrating them back to their home middle school or McCarthy, you know, at that point because they're there? It doesn't, with middle school being the quick three years that it is, they may, they may remain at McCarthy and be part of McCarthy for their seventh and eighth grade year or their eighth grade year if they're in the school within a school. So I think we'll see the transitions will be a huge benchmark for those kids. Their access to the mainstream essentially is, is a big benchmark for what we would be measuring so that they can have access to those non-disabled peers moving in that, that least restrictive continuum. So going from potentially a full day to no time needed in that program will really be our benchmarks that we'll be looking at. And that's really our benchmarks for all of our district-wide programs that we have, being that they're under that self-contained umbrella, is how much are they able to move out into the mainstream with non-disabled peers, access the general curriculum as modified as it might need to be for them. And then that's when we look to discharge them essentially and present to a parent that they don't require that level of need and support.
And even though, sorry, I'm monopolizing this now. Even though it's, it's a considered a school within a school pretty much for, for, for billing and placement purposes, are the students able to integrate into the more normative classes like your art, your chorus, your bands? Are they able to experience what, what a, a least restrictive opportunity in, even though it's kind of a self-contained?
So those are some of the things I think that we've, we've just talked about when we talk about that large grade span, when we get there and what would that look like? Everything from potentially utilizing some staff, some of our traveling staff, or what, what do we need to do to support those students to them accessing their, their home school if that's appropriate at that time as well. So I think we're, we're working on that plan slowly, but with the middle school group, it would be, you know, working to access what they can at McCarthy if possible.
Jilio.
Hi. I'm, I'm going to comment on something that you asked, which is, you're asking us tonight to approve this. And sometimes we give approval to something, we vote on it, we, in favor of it, it goes, and then we never hear anything about it, like for years. Really, and I'm not exaggerating. I think, you know, in order to give approval for this, we would need to feel like we were going to be somewhat more involved than has been traditionally our involvement in situations and programs like this. I mean, I, I think the idea is fine. And like I said, you know, that's part of the reason I wanted to be on the JS SBC because I, I liked this, this concept when they were building the school of being able to, to service the middle school kids who were no longer able to be in our district. So, you know, I, I just, I don't want to feel like, yes, so we may vote three to five tonight or whatever and say, sure, go ahead. And then, you know, five years from now, I may not even be on the board. But one night, there might be a thing about, oh, this is what we're doing. And it's going to be a fait accompli without us having any kind of involvement. And I, I, that scares me just a little bit.
So if I may, I'll be more than happy. And we can look at like our timelines that we're working with the DOE on whether there's a presentation at either a curriculum meeting or here on where we are in the approval processes. Mr. Bear said is we're just, I hate to say we're checking a box with the DOE on like what approvals do we need to continue the conversation for the full approval. But it's really still in the infancy stage of building it out. And there's still time for tweaks and modifications. But it's really, in, in order to continue the conversation, do we have BOE approval on just the alternate program? Like, I think we're looking eventually more of a program approval down the lines. But again, just continuing the, the conversation with the DOE and saying this is our best course of action at a present moment.
Raymond. Can we make a motion to approve the application as is, but that the district will come back to the board to seek further approval should the programming extend beyond middle school? And that would create an automatic trigger to make sure that it stays middle school until the board is apprised that you want to move beyond that?
Oh, they're, they're, we're approving it as kindergarten to 12th grade. So wouldn't that be?
So what I'm saying is, we're not approving the program. We're approving the application as it is. But if the programming extends beyond the middle school level, that has to come back for prior, for, for further board approval.
Yeah. And just full transparency, we can't even submit this application to the Department of Ed until we have certificate of occupancy and the fire inspection at McCarthy. So we're hoping to have this tonight so that in the next couple of months, when that is coming through from construction, we're able to submit that. And then we can move on to, as you said, the program approval phase, which is pretty lengthy. It would require the Department of Ed to come for a visit. We have to show them the location, which we can't do right now. And, and a lot of other steps we have to walk through. So we are hoping to have that completed for the fall as well for middle school. So that's why there's a lot of, a lot of pieces. And, you know, Ms. Lefebvre, I hear what you're saying. And I, and I hear Ms. Raymond as well, that we would not want to move that past without, you know, making sure you guys are aware. But it, it would be multiple phases that we'd have to go back through each approval each time and bring back the application to the board and go for program approval. So I'm happy to, you know, come, come back to the, Mr. Bear's happy to come back to the board at any point and, you know, talk to you about the program approval and such. But
Lucky Mr. Bear.
We both, we both would be happy to come and share that for sure.
Okay. Because I think, I mean, I'm comfortable with, I'm comfortable with approving an application so that the next step can happen. But I'm not comfortable approving an entire K through 12 programming where we don't have the details of what that would look like. That makes sense. So. Lefebvre, then I have a, a follow-up question. Ms. Lefebvre.
So, so in this, in this application, we, it's what we see. We see the application, what they, what is poss, what would be possible for us closer to do. There's no guarantees in there of how it's going to be run. And, you know, if you're bringing children back into their community, but they're in a completely separate, they're in a separate alternate program within a school, a school within a school, then how are they in their school community? They're not. They're in a, in a room in a place that's closer to their home. So they don't have a long bus ride. But if they, if they actually end up spending all their time in that program, then they might as well be in Massachusetts. They might as well be in another state. And I don't, there's no guarantees in this application that it's going to be run the way that you are telling us it will be run. And you know what? You know, I, I know this is going to be insulting, but I'm just saying this because I feel really strongly about this. The Laconia State School was started by people who had the best intentions, but it didn't turn out very well.
My, my question is in regards to the program and the curriculum, with all of the shifts that we're hearing what happening from the state level down, if the state is looking at, Heather, maybe you could, or Ms. Raymond, can maybe you can speak to this about the, the shifts in the DOE stuff? If, if it comes down from the state that they are now approving our curriculum and, and what we can do within the schools, how does that affect this program? And I know this is a, a crystal ball question, but with it being so looming on the forefront, I think it's something that we definitely need to be, like, how do we retain control over this?
So within special education, the IEP drives what the students need to learn. So the curriculums obviously be heavily modified and then the students need to have access to the general curriculum. So it may be using materials from that. And one of the things that we've been talking with the Department of Ed is how will we work with teachers that may be in this program and working with other middle school teachers as well as if we expanded to elementary or high school, you know, and that would be the setup that we have for, you know, our, our vertical curriculum and horizontal curriculum teams that we currently have in place. So they would be accessing, getting knowledge to what's happening in the general curriculum. Some of the curriculums would be probably alternative to kind of what the students are currently working on. And for a lot of these students, it's really, it's, it's, you know, learning how to be a member of their, their school community because their behavior does affect themselves and their learning and, and those around them. So a lot of that comes into that as well as, you know, trying to access what they can.
And how many students will we estimate able to pull back from farther destination schools where they actually spend more time within a school and not in transport?
That's hard to say. I think we looked before we came and we, 68 students currently out of district. So we currently have 68 students, elementary through high school out of district. So we're not looking to obviously in one fell swoop, try to get all those students back, but as many as possible that, that could fit within this program. And unfortunately, it's, it's where we're at with a lot of our students who have to go out of district. We've had a number this year as well. So we're trying to minimize that number so the kids are able to, you know, like I said, get back to their schools when, when it's possible and integrate back into one of our middle or high schools. But we would obviously work slowly to try to bring them back because everything that's new for parents that have a child at an out of district placement to show them a new environment and kind of talk about the reasons why and the successes will be, will be different for them. Hopefully, it's some of our students that are currently being challenged and may need a more restrictive environment that we're able to provide this to them so that they're not going to, you know, a school that, that's out of district and, and much more restrictive for them.
So along those lines too, I think it's hard to predict how many students we can go without any staffing, right? So if we want to bring students, like students back, we need to have the right structures in place. So how many teachers? How many paraeducators? Do we need an additional, you know, school psychologist for the program? So again, I think we need to assess what are the students' needs and what would the program look like? So again, we're still early in the, in the process on, again, how do we put a framework in place to get approvals? But a lot of those questions of what does it look like? It's still, we're not there. How many students are we targeting? And then what supports do they need? So it would be a careful review of each student's IEP. And then the harder question is like, we're not going to bring students back if we don't have the right structures in place. They're not going to be successful. So we have to build it up simultaneously.
So I, I listened to you speak earlier and there's a couple of things that you said, like, so there's 12 districts waiting to come to our schools. That's not our students.
Correct.
Okay. The other part is you also said that there's a criteria for, not only for the schools to release them back here to Nashua, but also for us to release them back to, to our schools. Because if they're not ready, if they're not, you spoke to that earlier. I, I feel like there's so many unanswered questions. And even you said with your last statement, the last time you were just talking, is that there's so many ups and downs. We don't know what to tell you right now, but we'll be willing to come back to you and ask you if that's what you want. And I think, you know, for me, that's, that's a lot. Those are three major things for me. We're not sure that we can bring the kids back from Massachusetts or from the other 12 schools or the Lighthouse or anything because those schools have to release them according to those IEP plans, even if we have the McCarthy Alternative School up and running. So there's so much there. I, and I just want to make sure that everyone here understands that, that you're not even sure, from what you said, how it will go after it leaves this board here tonight because there's so many things coming and going. And I just don't think that that's fair, not only to the board, but to the district, that you want us to blindly sign, seal, and release this to you because it's not, we don't, we don't agree with building a middle school to house everyone unless that's in the best interest of everyone. And I think that that's where we're falling today. And I definitely don't want them to be stuck in that situation because they have to be released.
So I think I'm, I'm just struggling with the, the released piece, right? It's IEP team decisions make those placement decisions. And currently, if we have a student who's out of district and we're having a meeting to discuss that and the child's placed at an out of district placement, we don't have an alternative in our district to bring that child back because we weren't able to meet their needs. So working to develop this program is going to give us that option as in to bring forward to the IEP placement team to discuss that. We currently don't have that option. And you're right, because we can't move forward with any of those other plans until the board gives us an approval of this application to submit to the Department of Ed. And then we enter into the program, the special ed program approval, which allows us to look at how all of the aspects that we, we're going to talk about would be part of the day-to-day operations of that facility in school. Like, what's it going to look like? What's the classroom going to look like? How many students are we going to look? I think, I think it was asked, how many would we bring back? Or how many students will we look to have as part of this program? Or how many students will we look to have as part of this program next year in those pieces? So, we can't move forward with that with the Department of Ed until we do this step. So, that's kind of why we don't have those answers.
Lamphier?
I still don't really understand why we can't move forward without an alternate program. I mean, can't we move forward as a school district with bringing kids back to the district? Why do we have to have this alternate program designation?
That's always the intent, to bring students back when we have the right infrastructure in place.
So, I mean, we can have the right infrastructure without this approval, right?
I mean, we could build it in a different way, but again, I think we would just have different conversations with the Department of Ed on making sure that we're following state and federal guidelines on what that structure would look like. But that's always the intent, to make sure that the students are in the least restrictive environment. But we still can bring students back. It's just, whatever the program's going to look like might look a little differently.
So, the students could still come back?
Absolutely.
Even if it wasn't an alternate program?
That's always been the intent, yep. So, we're just looking for flexibility on what would their, you know, depending on what their IEP.
What kind of added flexibility would the alternate program give you?
So, we're not there yet, but it might be things on, are we developing programs around, like, initially in the application, like, do we have different real-world settings? Are there community-based learning experiences that we can build into the school day that would be different than other type of programs? So, again, I think we want to think outside the box, least restrictive environment, but it might not meet minute requirements.
Isn't, like, community-based experiences, isn't that more for high school kids than for middle school kids?
Well, again, I don't think we want to limit our thinking. So, because we start working on transition goals as early as age fourteen.
So, many of our kids need to understand what leisure is as well. So, kids, what leisure activities look like as well, so community experiences do come into play as early as middle school with a lot of our kids.
Do the schools that our kids go to out of district, do they offer those same opportunities?
Not always, because it's a different makeup of students. I mean, we're really talking about challenging behaviors at those environments, extremely challenging.
Mr. Miraas and then Ms. Prin.
I have a couple of questions. So, first, how many kids are you expecting to be in this program, separate entity school, like, next year or in the coming years?
As I said before, we don't have that projection yet because staffing is going to play a huge role in that. And so, we have to go through, starting with, if we get this approved, our program approval, then we have to post for staff, look for staff, the appropriate means, and what is it that the students that we're looking to support within this program need especially?
Okay. Another one is, if you have kids coming from, like, another school district into this one, right? And then those kids can go into, like, classes with their non-disabled classmates, how does that affect, like, budget with, like, paying teachers to teach the kids that are within our district versus, like, teaching kids, having to pay teacher, that have to teach kids from out of our district? How does that work?
So, that's a long-term goal. As I said, we currently have a lot of in-district programs, and we have a lot of people, a lot of districts around to ask us to see if we can help their students, because their student may not be rise to the level of an out-of-district placement because of their behavior, but they have no means to support that child in their district. Being a larger district in the programs we offer, I consistently get calls and requests for us to consider that. However, we don't have the opportunities within our district currently to provide those to other students from out of district unless they are in a foster home or residential setting here or under McKinney-Vento in our district. So, this would, again, provide us that opportunity if those students were coming to this specific program and then they were able to transition back, they'd be transitioning back to their home district as well, not to our school specifically. They may start out that way, but it would be more or less going back to their home schools, because we'd really be looking at schools that are, school districts that are, you know, neighboring to us, Hudson, Manchester, Amherst, Mount Vernon, those type of districts that are within close travel proximity.
Thank you.
Can I just clarify, can I just clarify? I just want to be clear that it's not a separate entity. We're not looking at segregating students or isolating students. Again, this application's more about providing flexibility than segregating, like, just separate entities or, I just, I want the community to be clear that this is not, like, a school that's going to be in isolation. I mean, the idea is really to integrate as much as possible with flexibility around some of our programming, some might be curriculum or those aspects of it. But I just want to be clear, like, we are not looking to segregate students to say, you know, that's a whole different population of students. That's not the intent. And then the other aspect of, you know, just around, like, other districts coming in, that happens all the time. We have students currently from other districts, whether they're CTE students, you know, it's students paying tuition, and that happens all the time. So, that's, like, again, it's not a separate entity of, like, he has a special program coming in. Again, as Mr. Alexander said, we have students who are in the science of learning that come in from other districts. It's a special, it's a revenue fund, but it's just a pool of money that's being used. But that's just another avenue. But again, as much as, like, we want our students to be part of a community, not a separate entity, not feeling different, again, it's really, and we have to build that infrastructure. So, again, I don't want the impression is we're bringing kids back to isolate them. It's really to build that program. So, I want to be clear with that.
Thank you.
And then Heather, Ms. Raymond had a follow-up.
This is, I'm hoping this is a clarification, because I can speak to my years of experience as a classroom teacher. I also have a degree in special education, and for many years I worked at an elementary school which had an integrated preschool. We had many, many, many students who were on the autism spectrum. We started in the integrated pre-K, and then many of the students would stay in our building as part of the regular education classroom. And so, through the years, I had many students who had selective mutism, severe autism, many, many different diagnoses. And what we would do is we would definitely integrate into the regular education classroom. But I had on more than one occasion, I, for example, I had a student who was autistic who also didn't speak English. And for a short amount of time, because he was very non-verbal, he went to a different program within our district. It sounds like what this program is intended to be, is that he went for a few weeks until he was able to become at least to give me verbal cues in the classroom, and then we met, and he was able to integrate back into my classroom. And I've had that happen on more than one occasion where, especially with students on the autism spectrum who may have more impulse control, they go into, they just for a week, usually more than a week, about a month, maybe two months, six months tops is the longest I ever had a student that had to go out. But the ultimate goal was that, as part of their IEP, they always came back to the classroom. And I would hope that that would be the nature of this program. So, I'm hoping that can clarify for some people, because it is, it is all about the least restrictive environment, and sometimes students do need to go out just for a little bit amount of time, especially students who are non-verbal, people with, kids with behavior issues. And it can happen at any age. I did it when I taught first grade for many years. And then there's also been students who, you know, who suffered, like, tremendous amount of abuse, who had to go just kind of have, to have a space with a program where they could go for a couple of months to just learn to be human again before they could integrate back into the regular classroom. So, I'm hoping that, I'm hoping that's the nature of this program.
Thank you, thank you for that. I appreciate that.
So, I totally understand your goal. I understand the goal.
And I've said to Mr. Beer many times that we are the fate police, right? And that we need to make sure that, you know, we are giving our students the best free and appropriate public education we can. And a lot of times that does put us at odds with a lot of our regular ed teachers, sorry for those that are here, because we are pushing to keep them in our district, in our classrooms as much as possible. And to Dr. Andre's point, we're not trying to segregate kids at any means here. I feel they're more segregated being out of district in a school that has all students with disabilities and behavior challenges in it for a longer length of time where they wouldn't have access to that.
Well, I have something else that I want to say, and it piggybacks off of what Ms. Lamphier said in regards to the Laconia School. And I think it also pertains to what a lot of us are asking for in regards to the future of this, is, the thing with the Laconia School is, as we learned more about people with different abilities, we learned that enrichment styles changed, abilities looked different if we didn't look at them properly. And what happened with the Laconia School is they never added in any enrichment activities. They just ensured somebody was safe and had a bed and had their physical needs met. What I would like to see, and I don't think we do that a lot in this district, is we don't talk about what are the enrichment activities and what does the curriculum look like for kids who are not in the mainstream classroom. Maybe that's something we can focus on a little bit more, especially with us taking the specialized look at incorporating more ability levels within the schools, is let's get some feedback on how these programs are going. Let's, you know, use some of that evidence-based research that we're doing with our regular students so that we can watch their progress just as we watch every other student's progress. So, maybe that's just something, as whoever is kind of sitting in this seat with the board can ask for feedback from, you know, quarterly or annually or something. But we are definitely woefully behind in understanding what the special ed curriculum looks like, especially within these, you know, the Brentwood Schools and Franklin. But that's something that we could have a more vested interest in, because I don't think it's something, unless you're Ms. Lamphier and you have this, this opportunity to experience a program like this, it's still, it's still a novel experience for a lot of us. And I think we do need to be better board members at understanding everything that happens within our district and not just, not just the stuff that we understand on a superficial level. So, I think we need to make a board commitment to be more aware of those programs and how we're, how we're doing.
Because you brought up the Laconia State School. My undergraduate was in rehab counseling casework, and I went to Springfield College, and we studied the Belcher Town School and visited it after it had closed. And we did extensive research about the practices that took place in both there and Laconia. So, that is my background, and it nauseates me to think about what took place back then and that someone at the State House may have even brought something up similar to that, that that is not where we are. And I like to think of us, think of Nashua as being innovative and trying to support our students and be creative to the best that we can. And I would never want anything to be reflective of Belcher Town or Laconia or even be thought of that we were trying to do that, so. I just, this is, going back just as a minor point, but to Mr. Beer's questions earlier, I also wanted to point out, just as, not as a hard sell here, but just as the board's considering it, we're one of two large districts in the state, and so this is an unusual opportunity. Most districts don't have the opportunity to even examine, to Dr. Andre's point, the economy of scale of building programs within a district. So, Mr. Miraas, I thank you for bringing up that point about where other districts fit into this.
I'm hearing feedback from the board initially that we, I feel like we've had a decent conversation about this. Are we comfortable putting forward a motion tonight? Because I think I am. I don't know where everyone else is.
I think I would like, I still think I would like the motion to be to approve the application process, but to ask or direct the superintendent to come back to us before programmatic decisions are finalized.
Yep.
That reasonable language.
For ability to manage capacity.
Yeah. Because I think that, for me, an application is one thing. Let's see what the Department of Ed says. They could say no, right? But, and let's see what their feedback is. But then, before we take a step of initiating any programming, I would like a proposal for what that programming should look like before, and another motion to approve that programming. Does that make sense? I don't know how to write that down, though. My motion is to...
That's why we have a clerk now.
So, my motion is to approve the application, to approve the district to move forward with the application, but that the board will need to make a subsequent motion before we implement programming.
Okay. Recommendation to approve the application for the alternative program at McCarthy Middle School, but the board will...
No, but, so that, to, the, just started. The motion is to approve the district...
Submitting the application.
Submitting the application to the Department of Education.
The revisit on programming once approved by the state.
Yeah. And direct the superintendent to seek another motion before implementing, to seek approval from the board before implementing programming. Does that, does that work for you, Dr. Andre?
Yes.
Okay. So, the motion is to approve the, moving forward with the application, but direct the superintendent to come back and seek approval before initiating programming. I got it, finally, in one sentence.
That's okay.
Just took eighteen tries. Poor Ms. Lamphier trying to write it down.
Yeah, I think, I think we want to make sure that we're not setting anybody up for unreasonable expectations, so that includes what you guys have the capacity of providing to us.
I'd like to second that.
Thank you, Ms. Gilio.
And just, can I just re-read it before? Recommend, recommendation to...
No, not recommendation, just motion to...
Motion to approve the district's submission of the application for the alternative program at McCarthy Middle School and direct the superintendent to seek approval from the board before any programming changes.
Implementation.
Implemented.
Okay, thank you, sorry.
That's okay. I said it twelve times in, like, twelve different ways, and that was not helpful, but I was...
Sometimes I used to just write it really messy and hope that whoever was listening to the tape.
So, part of the problem with not having, because I'm a tactile person and not having a physical paper to write on is killing me. But just because I think that that way, the district can move forward, and then as you get feedback from the Board of Ed or the Department of Education, you can come and bring it to us, and we can then direct, make sure that whatever's plan is, is in line with our community values. And I think it also opens up the opportunity for families that might be impacted by this to have time to come to the board and share their thoughts.
Yes.
Yep. And staff.
I see faces over there that look excited to say something. Ms. Daniels-Williams, was that, say...
I don't see anyone looking excited.
Need for a new icon?
I still want to amend the years, not kindergarten through eighth grade. I know that we, because we can add that later, but this is the middle school, so to stay within that range.
My thought with saying to Dr. Andre that you can't do anything until you come back and get approval for a program is that that is the time where we would say, we're not going to approve K through 12, we're only going to approve six, seven, eight, or whatever. That's so that the board can then direct the grades that are being impacted before anything starts. But I, personally, I don't see the danger in letting the Department of Education review the application K through 12 and give us feedback on all the grades, because maybe they'll say, this is dumb and you can't do that, or maybe they'll say, here's what you must do in order to get approval for other grades. And that will give us some of the information of the questions that we had. Maybe not, maybe I'm going to...
I think one of the things we forgot to mention was, part of the application on the bottom, we actually submit the board minutes to the Department of Ed. So, they'll, they will hear, and they will see everything when they're typed out that you, we have said in here, including the coming back for programming. So, if they approve us for the K through 12 based on the vote, if the vote goes through, they're going to know that we're still coming back every time for the programming, so.
But we don't have verbatim minutes anymore.
Hey, that's going to come up in the policy committee meeting because of some issues with our minutes policy.
And we direct them to the...
It won't be in the motion, though, right? So, Ms. Raymond's motion has that in it, so.
Yeah.
So, that motion will be typed up.
Just not the discussion.
Right, so the motion will be there, and obviously, I'm sure they'll ask about the motion and everything, and we can inform Dr. Green and the team that we met with kind of why that motion was put forward in that manner, so.
They could always watch our meeting.
We'll send them the link.
Yeah. Do a hyperlink, just add a hyperlink in there. They, I don't know if it's ETV that does it or if it's just a YouTube thing now, but they definitely break things into chapters now. It makes finding... It makes finding things that we talk about in our much longer board meetings easier to find. Okay. Any other comments or questions? Okay, so I am looking for a vote on. I'm just going to say Ms. Raymond's motion. So all those in favor of Ms. Raymond's motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Innate.
You're innate as well, Ms. Daniels? Okay. Just wanted to make sure. Okay, so motion passes. We look forward to seeing what kind of evolution happens within this program.
Thank you all for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Doesn't, I. Okay, so liaison reports. Did not, we have not had JSSBC since, but Mr. Johnson was able to attend Ed Council. Do you want to give us a little review of the content of that meeting?
Well, it was my first time doing Ed Council, so it was definitely something, you know, that I'm glad I experienced now. And and it's a, it is a good thing to hear the feedback from teachers, especially at every level. I think that a lot of their concerns will be addressed coming up, you know, as best as we can. But it was a, again, first time, so it's a, it's a learning experience, but it but it was a good one. I definitely appreciated it. And I appreciated Dr. Andre being there with his input as well to, you know, sort of guide the whole thing. It's more my thing was just taking the whole thing in.
Yeah, I think as we figure out, because you and I are on it, as we figure out our pattern.
Yeah.
We'll have more continuity between that. But I I always think it's amazing when the teachers come to, because it's our meeting, they're coming to talk to us.
Right.
Dr. Andre just says all the answers, but sometimes, most of the time. But it is neat to hear what the teacher, what the feedback from the teachers are in a less formal situation. So.
Absolutely. And I also think, you know, being a few months in to when I'm like a year in, will definitely grow with it.
And you get taking notes now? Last time about.
Oh. So I actually responded to the email. So I have a Mac and I can't open outline. I know they they make like a an outline or an agenda. I can't open it on my Mac, so. Whatever was sent out was awesome, I assume, but I couldn't read it.
So yes, last time we talked about sharing what was the agenda. So I shared on our side with the BOE what the topics were, and I also shared that with the administration.
Okay, cool. So no other liaison reports? Excellent. This brings us up to our second public comment. I'm going to assume Adam is first because he's getting up. It'd be hilarious if he weren't. It would be embarrassing.
Adam Marqu, I live at Ford Jalory Lane.
Thank you.
I'm the president of the Nashua Teachers Union, and Mr. Johnson was at Ed Council. That was my first Ed Council ever as well.
Oh.
The president has not traditionally gone to Ed Council, but I was a pinch hitter that day. So we enjoyed our first Ed Council together. The Elm Street comments about the going away party or whatever you're calling it. My parents went to Elm Street, and then my oldest son went to Elm Street. And I didn't realize you were auctioning off all the stuff, so ignore the post-it notes with my name on it of things that I wanted, including the conference room. Right? With the fireplace, I mean. So if we just cut that out, Ford Jalory Lane.
We used to have our OM meetings in there.
I'm here to two things all related to each other. Special ed and then the restraint and seclusion policy changes. I was a first grade teacher at Charlotte Ave for three years, and we have three district programs there. And our youngest children in those programs were often mainstreamed into our classrooms with their peers, starting in kindergarten. Then I went to fifth grade for five years, and I had some of the same kids two times, which was great to see them developmentally at first grade and then in fifth grade to see their growth. And I will tell you that some of our intensive students are the most celebrated kids by their peers. And that's not just at Charlotte, that's at Broad Street and Birch Hill and the middle schools and the high schools. And if you watch the interaction between the peers of whatever ability it is, it is remarkable. But what comes with that is the need for supports for everyone. Whether it's our intensive special needs teachers and the paraeducators that support the needs in that room. Whether it's the support for our classroom teachers and the paraeducation educators that support them. And there are a myriad of other people that I'm forgetting that are involved in all of this that will call and yell at me tomorrow that are involved in making our programs a success. My concern is not having a program. My concern is staffing a program. My concern is staffing what we have today in the Nashville School District, not what we might have. And I'm, I would be thrilled to hear that we have found a slew of people that want to come and work here in Nashua. But I'm still looking. And I know that we are trying various other ways to accommodate that by enticing people to come and work in our school district. So I was glad to hear the road, the steps in this process, if you will. And also my concern that we need to worry about everything going on today to build upon the future. Bringing our students back with the right supports in place for everyone is is crucial. Because we don't want to set people up for failure. We want to build upon their successes. That leads to the changes in the law of restraint and seclusion. The law is important. It's in place. We expect everyone to adhere to that, regardless of what you do in the district. What I would ask, and they left already, and they're going to love me tomorrow because I did this with technology a few months ago. I need a this is what you can do, and if you do this, this is what we have to do. This is the, no, never do that. The restraint part is pretty clear. The seclusion piece is where I'm getting concerned about unintended things, right? If I stop more in the hallway and say, Mara, you shouldn't be running. You might hurt yourself. Have I violated the restraint and seclusion law? I don't know. And that is what troubles me. You mentioned professional development for our people, and that's great. I need to hand them something that's follow this little chart. Like, you have all those, all those texts, Microsoft Word for for dummies. And I don't like that word because it implies something. But we, like a sheet of how do we make sure that we are all following the law, the intent of the law in providing people ways to understand the law? That way, we are all on the same page and our students and our staff can be successful. I am concerned, I've been practicing, but I got distracted. Oh. Okay. So. I'm concerned about the paperwork. I also understand that did not come from you, the royal you, and that it needs to be done. I don't know when it's going to be done. And I think knowing when you have to do that based on XYZ will help streamline that as well. So primer, that's the word, a primer on how to. Thank you.
Hello, Laura Short, Mount Pleasant Elementary School. On July twenty fourth, two thousand and twenty-three, our Board of Education meeting ended with Dr. Andre and Ms. Bishop emphasizing the need for a task force for elementary redistricting, which I thank you for. The next steps were outlined to say, let's engage the community. Let's be strategic because it is, in fact, a citywide conversation. Not single school, not just the district. It is a full conversation. Let's wait till August. What's today? March twenty-fifth. That is eight months and one day. What are the next steps? Thank you.
Yes, I I know we have talked about that. I certainly want to get through this budget. This budget stuff first. We have probably three meetings every single week all of April, which I know you guys don't want to hear, but I can't make my board show up if they can't come. So right on the, like if we're already busy, if we can't be here, if I can't get a quorum together. So I know I said something confusing, but it's definitely on the priority list. So. Now to board member comments. I just lost my train of thought. Okay. I started with Mr. Johnson last time, so Ms. Lamphier, I'll start with you.
First, I just want to start with an apology to Dr. Andre and Mr. Mr. Alexander. I said some things that maybe I shouldn't have, and I'm sorry I got emotional and, you know, I know you guys are doing the best you can and you really are trying. And so you deserve an apology. And then I just wanted to say that I was, I was lucky. I don't get to do that many school events, but I got to go to Mount Pleasant PTO spaghetti dinner the other night, and it was so much fun. I mean, my husband had a great time. We got to meet a lot of people in the school. And it just to see all the families there enjoying themselves was was really great. So I just wanted to give them a shout out.
Raymond?
Thank you. So on community and school events, we just had the two all Nashville band concerts, which was like middle and high school together. There's one at South, one at North. I understand there's a chorus one coming up. I forget the date offhand. I just.
Tuesday night.
It's Tuesday, a week from tomorrow, a week from tomorrow. I won't be here, unfortunately. However, I encourage everyone who's able to go. It was really moving to go to the other one. And as far as restraint and seclusion go, the intent of the policy, the intent of the law, as it was explained to me in the Child and Family Law Committee, was that if a child is being prevented from leaving, that is a seclusion. That doesn't mean like when they're prevented from leaving their classroom because it's class time. It means that if a child is running for the street and they are stopped physically, right? And escorted back to their classroom, that would technically be a report home. So if a child is acting out in the hallway or a high schooler acting out in the hallway and, you know, has to be separated for a while and can't go, that could be a seclusion. And I'm hoping that the Department of Education issues some technical advisories around it. But I also asked for the form for five months before that showed up, so I got what I got so far. But the idea is that is that we just increase communication between school staff and home so that parents are more aware of what's going on with their kids, so they can also be supportive of what the kid needs while he's in school to be able to do school. So it's a, it's a tough one, and I I don't envy you guys your jobs.
Gilio?
I'm just, I just want to thank everyone for the input on the discussion that we had about the McCarthy program. And I felt like everyone could say what they felt and and not feel bad about it. I, you, you, I liked a lot of your comments, Mrs. Lamphier. And, you know, but I think our meetings haven't always been such that we could have the kinds of discussion back and forth that we've had tonight about that issue. And I just want to thank everyone who's here because it's refreshing. Thank you.
I don't have any comments.
Okay. Ms. Prin?
Yeah, I also want to thank everybody for the discussion. I, I'm actually, I'm hope, feeling hopeful about the the new program at McCarthy. Because I will say again, as a teacher, my experience before I had a program in the district I work in, I literally had a student who would throw everything in my room. And we didn't have any, any program for him, so I just kind of had to put up with it for a year. And then when he was in second grade, we were able to have a program where he was able to, for a month, go and learn the skills to be a part of a classroom. And he came back and he was a different child. And my principal at the time apologized to me. She said, I'm really sorry we didn't have this when you had him. It was, it was very stressful, but it was, it was good for him and it was nice to see the growth. So when I, when I know the kind of experiences I've had, I'm really hoping. Because also the other thing with kids that end up having to be outplaced is sometimes you have to wait. You can't, you can't always get them into a program out of district right away. And and you end up, as a, as a general education teacher, that ends up becoming even more stressful when you've got a child that you, that are, you know, is having a really hard time integrating into the regular. This, this makes me hopeful for Nashua.
And Mr. Johnson?
I think I echo everyone with the discussion was very important to have and and isn't, it isn't over. I mean, we're going, we approved an application. We need to hear more back, and we definitely need to see the integration. We've had integrated programs in Nashua. My son, when he was in kindergarten, was part of a integrated kindergarten class. And the interesting thing about that is that he ended up on IEP because they were able to notice his needs in that integrated classroom. So it has benefits for all the kids involved. And I think that's what we want to see happen with this new program. Is that not only that it benefits those kids who are in special needs, but it also benefits the students as a whole. So I, I look forward to seeing where it goes from here and that we'll be on top of it and following its growth from here. Oh, and Severn, please plug in your sibling's Chromebook so they're ready for their SATs.
Exactly. I I just want to follow up with what all of you guys have said about the quality of the conversation tonight. One of the things I was worried about with our board being so like-minded was that we weren't going to have the diversity of thought that we had before, right or wrong. Sometimes it's hard to make decisions when we don't have other people shining a light on something that we may not know everything about or even be have the option or opportunity to have experienced. So Ms. Lamphier, I want to thank you for really putting yourself out there. I always look to you for for that disability support. I know you and I both did that, the Modified Lend Program, but really look to you and your experiences. And I think one of the things that I heard you say that that kind of stood out to me the most is just how isolating it is to be a family with somebody who has a major disability in it. Just the the need to be with your peers, to be supported, to create those relationships. It's not just meeting the physical needs and and checking the boxes of of what your loved one wants. It's also about creating that community and making sure that the people who are providing the care for you, not just during the school day, but after the school day, also feels welcome and involved. And I, I hope, I mean, I'm not in charge of this, this, this program that you guys are creating, but I think the major theme is making sure that everybody feels a connection and a feeling of belonging. To go back to what Ms. Archer was saying this morning, this morning, we weren't here this morning. But what Ms. Archer was saying at the beginning of of this meeting about, you know, do you feel connected? Do you feel supported? Do you feel belonged? Do you feel like you belong? So I envision this Pollyanna-like world where we are able to meet the needs of the students, but also pull them in and create that community. So I hope I I didn't think incorrectly. Link, link, notch, notch. But thank you for for sharing. But thank you for, for sharing, for sharing your input on a subject that not many of us get to experience. And I'm really grateful for you and I'm, I'm glad that we can have these discussions, so. That's all I have to say. Go to the chorus concert last week, if you can review the, the band concert last week. They may have played a Lord of the Rings medley, which as everyone knows is my favorite trilogy.
Today is J R R Tolkien Day, it's to encourage people to read more Tolkien, just so you know.
Aw, I'm going to go home and have breakfast, maybe too. So with that, I would be looking for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Ms. Gillio, thank you, Ms. Prin. All those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
The opposed, motion passes, we are out of, our meeting has ended at eight eleven PM.